It's for like music playing?
Yeah, it's our introduction music that we always play when we get ready to do a session. It's the same music.
I fast forward through that part. Well, there's no captioning. So like, um, I always watch movies and videos with the post captioning because I have a hard time hearing people even what they're hearing. So if there's not active captioning, I fast forward until there's actual captioning and then I'm like, oh, okay, not.
Okay, I understand. That makes sense.
I think you're annoying the voices and the mouths don't hit with the right words. And then it annoys me because I'm reading lips and listening and reading and it's not all messing. It's frustrating. I'm weird.
That's okay. Okay, okay, everybody. Welcome back to the Mystic Syndicate. I am Brian and this evening we're doing another special interview. And this evening we have Melinda who plays Grinna Babel Boots. So I know that some people have been waiting for this one. I hope, uh, I've been looking forward to it personally. I don't usually, and I was like, I was talking with Russ, uh, earlier last week. Was that, um, uh, unlike everybody else in the group, I was new to, to this group of players. So I didn't really get a chance to really meet everybody, just kind of one-on-one. So this really helps me. As well as I hope it also helps you as well, get to, uh, interact with the DM other than just being in the game. So hopefully that'll be the case. So how you doing? You good?
I'm pretty good.
Okay, cool. All right. I'm just gonna move your microphone up just a hair so I can, so we could try to even it out. I mean, you sound great. The new microphone. I'm, I'm love, I'm digging your old new mic. So my cast, thank God. Alrighty, so, um, Belinda, how, how long have you actually been in tabletop gaming?
Started in, I started in sixth grade. My sister went away to college, my sixth, seventh grade year, and I went up to visit her at, um, UGA in, in Georgia. And she was talking about it with her friends because she was playing it. And it's also where I got introduced to the Society for Creative Anachronism at the same time. But it wasn't until eighth grade that I found a group that I started actively playing with. But I was introduced in end of sixth grade, beginning of seventh.
Okay, all right. I, I was under, for some unknown weird reason, I was under the assumption that you were brand new to it. I didn't realize you were a veteran of, of the tabletop.
No, I'm actually brand new to this group. So, you know, Russell started playing with his friends and he asked me, he goes, do you mind if I play D and D with my friends at night? And I'm like, yeah, okay, fine. While he was playing on Thursday nights and I was in the living room by myself, hearing all the happy noise and I would come in, what's going on? And he would tell me and I'm like, oh, that's messed up. And then I'd leave. And I was getting mad. And finally, I walked in, I said, I'm mad at you. And he goes, why? I go, because I want to play too. And he goes, oh, well, let me talk to Ed. And then I started playing with them.
That's nice. Okay, that's pretty good. So of, of all the years that you've been playing, what would you say is your favorite game system?
Um, I started playing second edition. So that tends to be where I go to. Russell likes first edition. Fifth edition confuses me a lot. So I don't know. I guess I just like first and second. But I'm, I'm getting used to the fifth edition and the D and D group that I sponsor at the school plays fifth edition. So I'm having to make sure that I understand all the rules. So when they're playing and some of them actually question the DMs that are kind of new. I can say, okay, while the DM is saying this and we're going to go with the DM, but then I would talk with the DM afterward and we would go over the, the rules and his, why he did what they did and all of that. But I never, you know, it's just learning something new. My brain's been kind of fried the last year.
Understandable. I've only ran, I think, like two or three, uh, five E campaigns. And I still get them, uh, get the rules mixed up with Pathfinder first edition. Uh, which is one of my favorite, um, gaming systems. But, uh, yeah, no, uh, yeah, second edition, love second edition. So as far as fantasy worlds go, what would you, which one would you consider as your favorite?
Fantasy worlds?
Yeah.
Um, uh, you know, I don't really have one. I normally we play like the medieval league type things with elves and, um, a lot of the campaigns I used to run were more on the lines of Dragonland.
Okay.
We were all reading those books and we were all sharing those books. So that's kind of where most of the campaigns were that I was leading. But, um, I'm open for anything as long as it's fun and has action.
Okay.
And I'm actually successful in my actions.
Okay.
Pretty demoralizing when you go a whole time and you're like, well, I accomplished not dying. But that's the only thing I can say that I've done. And that's kind of a little.
Okay. So you would pretty much consider yourself a more, um, more action than role playing?
I love the dungeon crawl.
You, you're the dungeon crawler person? I understand. Okay.
I don't play characters that are conducive to that, but that's I like.
You like, you like the dungeon crawl, but the, the characters you have are usually the ones who don't fare too well in dungeons. I like it. Okay, I get it.
Because I don't, I don't really stick with one character grouping. So like every time I'm like, oh, well, let's just do something completely different. Like this time, I've never played a gnome. I've played lots of Rangers, but they're normally half elf or elf. Um, and I've never played an artificer. So that's new. And that's, there's not a whole lot of rules and directions on what they can and cannot do. So a lot of that's interpretation. And it's just trying to figure out how it all works. And I think after 35 episodes, I think I'm starting to figure that out.
Well, I mean, even I have questions concerning artificer. I've never played one. I don't know that much about them. Um, it was like when we were dealing with that rules, uh, issue, uh, concerning the, uh, what was it? The, the, the device that you can make that it kind of makes it turns, turns into a flame for, we were all kind of looking at this going, okay, well, is there a role? Is there, you know, it's, we, we've been so conditioned to having a skill check added to something. It's like, well, you know, let's see if you pass or fail this. Not realizing that the way that the rules were written, it was just boom, you know, it's, you create it. It's like, well, hell.
As long as you have the tools.
As long as you have the tools. That's right. Okay. So cool. So of all the things that have happened so far in the, in the, uh, campaign, what do you think has been the worst thing that has happened in the campaign?
Getting cursed.
Okay, yeah.
I was really often I, this year at work has been really stressful. So by the time we play at night, I'm done. And there are some where I'm sure it seems like I'm not paying attention at all. And that's not on you. It's just my ADHD brain has gone, oh, look shiny. And then I'm like, oh, Russ, catch me up. That was one of those nights.
Okay.
But it's not you.
Okay. Well, thank you. That makes me feel better. Okay. Well, good. Yeah. I, I would, I would say getting cursed. Getting cursed by the Dryad Princess was probably a, that was, that was pretty bad. Because it actually has been kind of detrimental to your, and, and actually to the group itself. There's been several times when there's been roles that should have been, been made that the curse took a hold and they, it's, it's, it has messed with you all some. Not too badly.
And we're a bunch of ADHD rabbits. So you give us this new quest and we're like, oh, we're going to do that. It doesn't matter that we all talk about, we're, we're, we're going to go take care of this. And you're like, no, look at this. And we're like, oh, shiny.
Oh, look at that. Yeah.
There we go.
And, and, and I have explained this to other people. It's, I, I know that a lot of times you run into dungeon masters who have a linear, or for the, the, the lack of a better word, I guess, railroad, you know, straight, then here's your, here is your, your quest, you know? And I, I'm, I'm not that type of person. I can't, I mean, I could do that. But I kind of like, I like to think like in spider webs. So there's like, but the scary part about the spider web is everything ends up turning or it ends up interlet, interwapping with each other. So eventually everything will finally come to a close and all these little threads will be, uh, will be, you know, either put into one or terminated in one shape or form. And it does kind of throw people, especially people who are more linear thought process. And, and I know that you, as an educator, you understand, you've, you've seen this before. So, uh, yeah.
No, I don't mind the rabbit hole. It bugs Russ a little because he's very linear. And I don't, Ed and I are not linear. So I was like, okay, we're doing this now. Yay. Let's not die. But it's the first time I've ever had a character make it to ninth level, ever.
Well, congratulations.
So I'm not really sure what to do with that.
Well, hopefully everyone, because like, uh, like, um, the fifth edition is a lot different than, of course, other, um, uh, uh, what, what was it? So other game systems. It's, it's, it's very forgiving. It, um, it lends more to, uh, the, the possibility that characters will, uh, get higher levels. Where like with other gaming systems, death was a finale, you know, like, uh, it was a very final step. Like in first edition, it was, it was like, well, hey, you're rolling another character tonight, you know, here you go. But that was also kind of the same way with second and third. Um, it was, yeah. But, uh, fifth, fifth seems to be more forgiving, uh, which is fine. Uh, I mean, it's okay. Uh, alrighty.
When we were playing second, we got so tired of rerolling five characters a night that we decided that if you started off with 10 hit points, okay, meaning four hit points, if you made it to negative four hit points, your character was gone. So you were able to get back. It allowed us to at least get to third level before we were completely gone.
Right.
Especially since, um, at the time I really liked playing magic users. I have since moved away from they died.
Yeah, magic users are pretty, uh, can, are pretty squishy. So the end result was that, I mean, even, even a, a small pack of rats or what is a domesticated cat can kill you. It's like, what the hell? It's like, damn, this, this is pretty bad. Alrighty, so moving right along. So, uh, what do you think has been the funniest thing that has happened in the game so far?
Uh, Russell blowing everybody up. That was pretty funny.
That was cool.
The monorail was a bit much. But that's okay. I liked making my death cannon. That was fun.
Yep.
Um, and I actually really enjoyed last week's game. Actually felt more useful, even though we got cremated and smashed. I actually felt useful and like I contributed something as a character.
Very good. Okay. Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you felt that, 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 that was something that you were able to experience. Yeah, that was a pretty tough fight. Um, and, um, I had, uh, you know, you know what? I'm not going to share my, my secret, but you know, it is what it is. Y'all did good.
It's probably going to bite us in the ass in the next one, but that's okay.
Probably, but you know, you just never know.
Never.
You know, who knows what's going on in my noodle here. Alrighty, so, uh, so far, who is your favorite character teammate?
My favorite character teammate?
Teammate. Of all of your teammates that you have, who, as far as playing Grinna, you know, it's like, who is probably?
Depends on the campaign.
Well, I would say this campaign.
I mean, I mean, uh, uh, not the campaign. I'm sorry. On the, on the night.
On the night.
Um, she seems to gravitate more toward Kiffy and, um, Kellex and, um, well, helps department for everybody's name.
Did you need me to go through them?
The dwarf and the paladin.
Okay. Well, yeah. So you got Kiffy and Kellex.
There we go. Okay. I did get their names right.
Yeah, you got them right. Okay.
I think those are the two that she tends to, to go off with. Other than the past couples, she's been running off with Timbal, but I'm not sure that he's a good influence on her. So.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. So Timbal might be kind of like in the middle there somewhere. Okay. Okay. So pretty good. Pretty good. Um, if you could change your character's race and class, what would it be and why?
You know, I don't think I would. Um, a druid might be useful in this campaign, but hindsight's 2020. Um, but no, I I'm kind of pleased with her now that I've figured out some of the nuances of the race stuff. I'm still figuring out more. Like I keep rereading. It's like, oh, I didn't know I could do that. Oh yeah, that's right. I get two, two actions around now. This is all, all new. So, uh, no, I don't think I, I don't think I would change anything.
That's fine.
I mean, not playing gnome again anytime soon, but or am I really a gnome? You know, that door has been kind of opened a little.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, and that's also something that I think further down the road, you're going to have to, uh, you're, you're, you're going to have to face some things. I'm, I'm just not, I'm not trying to, you know, tip, tip my hand here, let you kind of, but, uh, eventually you are going to, I, I, there's, as the saying goes, plans within plans, you know, huh? Yeah. Lots of opportunities for Grinna. So, um, I, I, I think probably one of my most favorite episodes was when you realized that your parents weren't what they really seem to be. And you're looking, I just remembered the, the expression on your face. You were like, wait, what? My parents? You know, when you were talking with Vitrum and I'm like, oh, yeah. Ooh, dark family secrets.
They're a simple person. I take what you tell me and face value.
Okay, so personally, has there been, uh, what has been your greatest challenge in this game, if any?
I think having a voice. Um, I'm not a very assertive person. Assertive last week. I'm talking, but, um, a lot of times I feel like they kind of run over me, which is partially my fault, but partially I'm not going to push it. So that's why I put random things up in the chat.
And, and, and I did notice that. And I, you know, I've been trying to become more cognizant of if I hear you. And for a really long time, when you all had the, the microphone that just didn't work well, it was very hard sometimes to realize that you'd said something. And I felt so bad because yes, the rest of the loud, the loud folk, me included, would just step all over you. And I, and at the end I'd be like, oh, is there anything that we can do to? And, uh, I even, uh, I'd even mentioned to, uh, I think it was like Ed, and I think he even mentioned to Russ, I had went out and purchased a brand new, uh, Blue Yeti microphone and I was going to send it to you. And just as I was getting ready to say, hey, I got this cool mic. I'd be happy to send it to you. Russ says, oh, check out the cool mic I just bought. And I'm like going, really dude? Really? Really?
I mean, it's always awesome.
And I was like, okay, that's cool. You know, it's, it's, it is what it is. And I told my wife, I said, hey, I got a new microphone. Um, I'm going to use it. I'm going to give you my old one. It works perfectly fine. And she was like, oh, great. Cool. And it's like, okay, cool. So it's not going to go to waste. She'll, she'll use it for something.
I appreciate the, uh, the thought.
It was so.
We've been having issues with that old one for a while and I, 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 I don't remember what finally, what his final drive to replace it was, but I think he got the new one while I was down in, uh, Florida.
Yeah. Think probably one of the, uh, when we were, we were doing some testing and stuff like that to try to find out if there was some way to work around using the old one. And I remember he had it. And we just realized it just wasn't working. And he just takes it and whips it back behind him and it smashes into the ground behind him. I'm like, well, that'll fix it. Yeah, that's fine.
That, that's normal for him. I didn't go with it.
I just chuckled because it was like, yeah, he was obviously finished with it. So I was like, okay, cool.
Yeah.
So, um, how do you feel about how the campaign has progressed?
I, I'm just a player. I, I'm having a good time. Most of the time. There have been a couple, couple of sessions where I was like, can we move along a little bit faster? Cause you know, some of, uh, like especially Timbal is really interested in all the political intrigue and not really my thing. But that's okay. You know, you, you have lots of different things and it's interesting to see all the stories and how they're starting to intertwine. Um, I'd like to finish seeing how this whole dragon plays out. And how the drow play into all this, because that's kind of, that came out of left field. We're like, oh. And then we still have Toby sitting out there. And I think we've all become very paranoid of Toby. Like, is this a Toby thing?
Okay.
Though I am getting tired of being blamed for all the time in between sessions. They basically blame that on me and the curse. So.
Okay. Okay, cool.
Not all much.
So, um, so at the conclusion of The Princess of Celine, which is many, many more sessions down the road. Um, would you consider signing on for another campaign if I was running it?
Absolutely. You're a great team.
Thank you. That's awesome. That makes me feel good.
Role playing and that's, um, that's been kind of fun. And I, I'm just like, boy, you play some of these characters really well.
Well, the, the thing is though, I, this is not the first time I've ever ran this campaign. Uh, this was a campaign that I kicked off in 2010 with a live group setting around a large round table in, uh, in two of the players', uh, living room. Or in their dining, it was their dining room table. And this was a massive round table. You could easily fit eight people around it.
Wow.
It was monstrous. It was a beautiful table. And it started there. And what was so interesting is the way you guys are playing the game is so different from the way that they played it. It still has the same basic principle. The original, it, it, and the, and the, it still has the same basic principle. But the difference was there, the person who, um, the, the character Amelda was actually played by a real person. Yeah. Yeah. Melda was actually a player character. And when I first, when I first got with Ed and, and then started talking about running this, I was hoping somebody was going to take on uh, an, an elven, and it could have been an elven, anything, but it just had to be like a female elf or even a, uh, a male elf. Cause they could have easily been just, you know, I could change things around. It wouldn't have been it. But no one picked elf at all. And I'm like, okay, fine. So the, the, uh, the, the Melda person had to become an NPC. Which was totally different.
Better to your advantage.
Um, yeah.
Can manipulate a little more.
I can. Yeah. And it, and it was nice, uh, being able to do that. But the way you guys played it, it is completely different from the way that the original team. In my origin, in the original team, I mean, I can get online on Facebook right now and they still were talking about this adventure. I mean, it's, it's been, and it, and, and for them it ran for, well, because we played every two weeks. And we ran for two years. And, but we were doing.
I don't think we'll go longer than two years.
But, but we were, uh, we, uh, everybody would show up, uh, right at five o'clock and we would not leave until two in the morning.
Oh my gosh.
It was crazy.
Can't do that anymore. That hurts.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I mean, I, I couldn't ask, I couldn't ask a, a party today to do that. Uh, even the live games that I play here locally, we at most are four hours. I can't, I mean, back in, back in those days, I could get away with that sort of stuff. Uh, and my son would all, he also played in that adventure. Um, actually he played the character Vitrum. That was his character. Yeah. So you got a little bit of insight on there, you know, some of.
Your son changed the way you DM?
I'm sorry?
Does playing with your son change the way you DM?
Playing with my son is insanity. Okay. You have to understand Rob is a force to be reckoned with when it comes to playing role playing games. Uh, he usually only plays rogues. Uh, they're mostly neutral or chaotic neutrals. With evil tendencies, as he likes to add. Um,
I don't think I've ever played a character like most of mine.
Uh, a lot of.
Chaotic neutral one time and that ended up being good. So they're like, why do you even try?
Yeah. It, it's hard, it's hard to play those types of characters when you're not, it's, it's hard to slip into a role, you know, where you're playing evil or playing a certain type of good character. But the, but the thing with Rob would, he would, the first time they would go to like a major city. He said, I need to go to an orphanage and I need to get as many kids as I possibly can. And I'm like, why? For, for the love of God, why are you doing this? And he said, okay. So he told me, he said, okay dad, here's what I, here's my plan. Okay. You remember, uh, Oliver Twist, right? And I'm like, oh no, oh no. And he said, yeah, I'm going to be Fagin. I, I need, I need a, just a band of child thieves just running loose in the city, stealing everything they can. And I'm like, okay, okay, fine. Uh, and, and that's, that's the type of playing he is. But I could easily see him also being the same type of person who'd be like, okay, well, what are you going to do with these when the kids get a little too old? And he said, uh, then they'll be my child soldiers. And I'm like, what the hell are you doing? You know, it's like, okay, yeah, nice. You know, we're doing war crimes now. Thanks, Rob. You know? Um, that's, I have, when I, when I DM for him, I have to really, I have to rein him in sometimes. Cause sometimes he'll just go like, yeah, he's like, okay, I'm, I'm going to do this. I'm going to do that. And I'm like, oh God, he's a lot like Ed.
Speaking of characters she doesn't particularly like.
I was about to ask that question. So there's one character that, or, uh, that, uh, Grinna does not particularly, uh, care that much for is, would, would it be Tomas?
Yeah. And occasionally, um, my darling husband. Move already.
Fair, fair. Okay. So as far as questions go, that's all really I had. Um, was there anything else you'd like to add or is there, uh, anything? Okay. I really liked the graphic that you have in the back, in your background. I really liked that.
Russ did that.
That's cool looking.
Can't see my horns, but that's okay.
That's okay. It's cool.
They're there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, yeah. When Russ was like, oh, he wants to interview. I'm like, I'm not that interesting of a person.
Oh, can't say that. Oh my gosh. No, no. It was, one, once again, it was really nice to be able to actually sit down with you. Find out a little bit about your, your gaming background and your viewpoint when it came to the campaign. I really appreciate you taking the time. That's, it, it means a lot.
Do you? I, I've enjoyed it. Um, I'm looking forward to it. Like, we're gaming tonight, right? And he goes, well, right now we are. Okay. And then I'm just like, yay. And I've got snacks. I got home. And he's like, we out of camp. So I'm like, I have snacks now.
Hey, at least you got snacks. But, uh, well, the nice thing is that I believe we are playing Thursday. So that's only three more days away. So that's not too bad. Um, so hopefully we'll, uh, and it should be a pretty interesting evening. You guys are gonna be, uh, having to, uh, de- kind of deal with the, 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 the fallout from what, what happened with, um, with Kellex. Be something you guys can, uh, talk about. I don't know if you've seen the, uh, the Kellex video on him and the dragon.
I did, I did.
Okay, so you kind of got an idea of what transpired, but we'll talk more about that on Thursday. And, uh, then we're gonna see exactly where you guys go next. Because there's, like you said, the spider web. You just never really know where, um, you know, who's gonna make the decision on what happens next. And so we'll see.
We're going the straight line.
No, 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 you really don't.
We'll do stuff and you're just, I could just see you're like, okay. Did you just sigh at us?
Although, yeah, there's been a couple of nights where I'm just going, oh, they're making my head hurt. I don't know why. Why are they doing this? Um,
I think the only time we actually did what we had planned to do was when we flooded the graveyard. I think that's the only, only time we actually did what we said we were gonna do. The rest of the time, you know, doesn't, doesn't survive first contact.
And, and that was like one of the weirdest things too. I'm sitting there looking, looking at going, flood the graveyard? Really? Is this, okay.
I'm gonna tell you our thinking behind this. If it was their lair and we were going in the front entrance, that was probably their back entrance. And they can't go through water. At least we thought you couldn't. So at least they wouldn't have a back way out. That was our, that was our thought process on that.
Yeah.
Because the coffins going through, that was a little weird. So if we flood it, they can't come back out. That was our thought process.
Right. Not, not realizing that there was already like a secondary cave system and, yeah.
Well, we didn't get into that.
Right.
We just went to that thing and we saw the other ways. And I'm like, hmm, that's a good way to die.
Yeah, I was like, wow, okay. Would have never thought about that. The other, the other t- the other party that I ran through there back in twenty ten would have never done that. That was like totally alien to them. And I'm like, okay.
I will say it's the first time I've, since playing with this group, um, playing with a bunch of ex-military people has been interesting. And I'm not a tactic, tactics person. And they're all about all this military stuff. And I'm like, uh, you just tell me where you want me to shoot it. I may be a military brat, but I'm not military. And that's a whole different ball of wax.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the, the original group that I ran, none of them were ex-military. They were just, you know, one guy was a, uh, computer programmer. Um, uh, his, his, his wife was pretty much stay at home. Um, let's see, uh,
They, and they approached the problems very differently than civilians.
Yes, yeah. I, I would say probably one of the more fun thing was like every once in a while, the husband and wife would just get into a shouting match over something. That, it was in the game. It was, I mean, they would just be like, he, he was very, very logical. And she was sometimes not. And they would just go at it. And I mean, there would be times that I look over at the other players and like going, should we just go? I mean, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm kind of uncomfortable.
You know, I think Russell and I have ever played a campaign where our characters were a couple. Just the whole idea of that is not
Well.
Something I would have entertained.
Well.
Were so different.
Yeah. Uh, th- this group, they weren't a couple. They weren't a couple at all. No.
They were reenacting their marriage in fantasy world.
It was, it was really alien. I, I didn't know where to go with it because I'd never seen this much. Uh, I mean, she would just like stand up and she says, you know, that's, you know, she, you know, she'd call shenanigans on something or bullshit. And he would be like, looking at her. And of course, he's just trying to apply like pretty much straight line logic to everything. I mean, because that's the way his brain was wired. And she just wasn't having it. And I'd, you know, I'd be like, okay, well, let's try to calm it down here a little bit and oh, yeah. So I am really, it is nice to see a couple play that, you know, aren't trying to either undermine each other or try to, you know, that, that's, that's kind of nice. It's, 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 even though he, he did blow you all up, you know, in, in the swamp. That was cool. But, you know, I don't think anybody was ready for that, so.
Now we throw shade at each other. It's all good.
That's cool.
It's just a game.
Totally. Yeah. Well, I think, uh, this is a good enough place to wrap it up. Uh, again, uh, Melinda, thank you very much for taking the time to hang out and answer, uh, a bunch of questions. I, I don't know who is up next. I'm kind of thinking it's either gonna be, uh, it's either gonna be Kiffy. Uh, I mean, it might actually be, it might be, uh, Kellex, which would be fine too. Uh, or Timbal. I think those are the last three we got. So we'll, uh, we shall see which one steps up to the plate. Hopefully we can get this done next week.
I wanted me to go next.
I just thought it was a nice follow-up after Russ. Uh, which, which was a great interview. Uh, it was really, really fun getting a chance to, to learn a little bit more about Russ. I, like I said, I hardly got a chance to chat with any of them.
He's an interesting guy.
He, yes. I, I gotta say that. The way he plays his character is completely different than I was expecting. Um, but then again, okay, that's cool. You know, that works.
Hasn't changed in twenty nine years.
All right. Uh, so folks watching at home, thank you all very much for hanging out with us this evening. I have been, uh, here with, uh, our, our guest. Um, Melinda, who plays Grina Brabble Boots, a gnome ranger who has a, uh, uh, a ward companion named Bubbles. So, uh, catch us on Thursday night at seven PM when we go live with episode thirty six of A Princess of Celine. So other than that, y'all have a great night. Melinda, thank you again. Have a good night.